Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, April 18th regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the Town of Florence. Maricela, would you please do roll call?
Commissioner DeRosa? Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Commissioner Pro?
Present.
Vice Chair Adam?
Here.
Chairman Frost?
Present, thank you. And I failed to acknowledge that we have a new Commissioner sitting with us and we appreciate Commissioner DeRosa being here with us.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I look forward to working with all of you this evening and in the future and to staff who has been so gracious to sit with me and spend a lot of time with me, updating me on where we're going on. And I have a number of questions tonight that I'll be looking forward to asking, but thank you all for your graciousness.
Thank you, and we appreciate our Council Liaison being here. Vice Mayor Mendoza, thank you very much. With that, if you'd all please rise, Commissioner Pro is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start out with a call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Individual Commission members may respond to criticisms made, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the Commission shall not discuss or take actions on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. And with that, is there anyone in our audience this evening that would like to address the Commission? Maricela, is there anyone online that would like to speak?
No.
There we go.
Hello, Lisa Garcia, staff member of the Town of Florence. I'm just here to remind you that the reason why Liaison Nicole Buchalata is not present is she is attending the Chamber Award Ceremony tonight, and I apologize to each of you who are missing it, so thank you.
She blew us off.
She needed to attend.
Thank you. Maricela, is anyone else online that would like to?
If you're online and you would like to be to say something that calls the public, please raise your hand. That is a no.
Looks like no hands are raised digitally or physically, so we will move on. We'll close this and move on to the next agenda item, which is discussion approval or disapproval of the minutes from the regular meeting conducted on March 21st, 2024. Commission members, any comments, concerns, or anything with the minutes from that day? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting from the regular meeting of March 21st, 2024.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion for approval by Vice Chair Adam and a second by Commissioner Pro. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, looks like we're five ayes on that one, Maricela. New business, item number six. Nomination slash action by the Commission to select a chair and vice chair. Commission members, that's your pleasure.
I'd like to make a nomination. I'd be honored and pleased to nominate Lonnie Frost as our chair again.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Okay, I guess we should vote separately on this, right, versus Lisa? Vote separately on this one?
Yes.
Any other nominations on this one?
It's Lonnie.
Okay.
Okay. So I can go through each one of you, or did you all?
I just asked if there are any other nominations, and there was no response, so all in favor of, I guess myself, continue on as chairman of the Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes to that one? Hey, Maricela, looks like we have five ayes up here.
Very good.
Nominations for vice chair of the Commission.
I'd nominate Kathy.
Kathy Adam?
I'll second.
That she continue in that position?
And I would second that nomination. Are there any other nominations? I can't talk tonight. Any other nominations for vice chair of the Commission?
Close nominations.
No other nominations.
Close the nominations.
We'll close that then and call for the vote. All in favor of Kathy Adam continuing as vice chair for the Planning and Zoning Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, like unanimous on that one as well, Maricela.
Very good.
Thanks, everybody. Old business. Presentation of the request for a continuance by the applicant on the preliminary plat for the planned unit development known as Florence 287. This is PZ-22-46. Maricela or Larry, are any comments, presentation on this one?
I will do a short presentation here before handing it off to the applicant. Let me get this running. Very good. The first PUD on this list is for Ataway Crossing.
Maricela, I think was maybe a slight misunderstanding. This is for the request for a continuation for 287.
You are correct. My bad. I apologize.
No problem.
We received a request by email from the Langley property owners to ask for a continuance of the item for the preliminary plat for Florence 287 as they didn't know what would happen on Monday in the vote for council. So I'm just giving this update that they're looking to be at the next meeting in May. That's when the preliminary plat will come back for Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation.
To our first meeting in May?
Correct.
Okay. And do we need to act on this in any way?
I do not believe so.
Okay, well, just for understanding that the first meeting in May, be prepared to see that plat come back to us on Florence 287.
Because it's a preliminary plat, it doesn't require a public hearing, and they just asked for a continuance the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're ready for the next agenda item, 7B, Ataway Crossings Planned Unit Development. This is a presentation, public hearing, recommendation of approval or disapproval with or approval conditions. Don't let me forget it's a public hearing.
Now I will go on the presentation. So the applicant is CVL Consultants and the owner, Mr. Peterson, will provide a presentation later, but today, Ataway Crossing Planned Unit Development is a rezone from rural agriculture RA 10 and single-family rent share, RA 1R. They're looking to turn that area into a planned unit development. In terms of public hearings, we did have a neighborhood meeting on January 11th of 2024, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission completed a work session on February 15th, 2024, and since then, CVL Consultants has worked to advertise this public hearing. This is the site. It is the northwest corner of Ataway Road and Hunt Highway. The owner is Ataway Crossing 147 LLC. This planned unit development will include single-family residential as well as commercial. The single-family residential will be in the rear of this parcel, and they plan to have the commercial along the frontage on Hunt Highway. Within the staff report, we put down 18 stipulations that we attached to the project. The responsibility falls on the developer to ensure that Ataway Crossing adheres to the development in the design construction listed within this planned unit development and also what is within our town codes. This proposal aims to provide also a network of open spaces and connection between both the commercial and residential. That actual connection will come through in the plats if approved. The proposed PUD aligns with suburban neighborhood land use designation. Suburban neighborhood calls for residential, whether it be medium density or low density. It also allows for commercial that will service that residential, and this is what has been brought forward in this planned unit development. They did provide a master water report, a master wastewater report, as well as a traffic impact analysis study. These were all reviewed by the town engineer and approved to move forward. The proposed planned unit development, staff found that it was consistent with that suburban neighborhood designation and accesses provided along Hunt Highway and Ataway Road. The Ataway Crossing PUD will provide more residential and commercial opportunities that are needed to support the Town of Florence and that the request is within the interest of the general welfare of the public. With that being stated, I will now turn it over to the representatives.
All right, good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Thank you so much for hearing our cases this evening, and thank you, Maricela, for the presentation. I appreciate it. My name is Julie Vermillion with the applicant, CVL Consultants. I'm the land planner, and with me tonight is the engineer Doug Chubin. I'd like to take you through our Ataway Crossing project and then the adjacent project, the northeast corner of Ataway and Hunt will be coming up next. So you can see our site here. We're at the northwest corner of Ataway and Hunt Highway. I just gave a presentation on this a few weeks ago, so I'm sure you remember, and I'll touch on the highlights, and I'll focus more on the changes that we've made since the last study session and how we've updated our plans since you've last seen it. So here's a summary of our updates. Per your recommendation, we've incorporated our conceptual water and sewer layouts into our proposal for reference. We've illustrated the suggested pedestrian connection to the north. Of course, that will be subject to approval by Polty Homes. This connection is planned, but it may not be permitted at the time of development pending that approval. We've removed smaller turf areas throughout the site in favor of a large turf play areas for families to enjoy in a centrally located area, and we've enhanced amenities in that central park with two ramadas now, a trail with fitness stations, playground, multiple shaded seating areas, or similar amenities of the same quality. And we've noted on the wall plan that residential side yard gates shall be painted or composite wood. It was stated as an issue at the study session that residential side yard gates can sometimes be bare wood and deteriorate over time, so we want to make sure that we nip that in the bud and make sure that's in our entitlements, that we'll have it painted or composite wood. So as Maricela mentioned, our general plan designation is suburban neighborhood. Our existing zoning is PUD and GR. And then here's the agreement. Here's the agreement that we discussed at the study session. So as you all know, this subdivision was previously approved as part of Anthem, and so it's been zoned for residential use for over a decade now. And in 2020, an agreement was recorded to split our property from Anthem to become a standalone community for Ataway Crossing. As part of that agreement, it allowed 20.2 acres of commercial. We're currently proposing 13 acres. It also allowed up to 588 lots, and we're proposing 541 lots. So we're well within the criteria of that agreement. And here's that overall PUD zoning. Here's our conceptual land use plan. We haven't made any changes to the plan since the study session. You can see that the lotting remains the same, the commercial areas along Hunt Highway remain the same, and we're showing that approximately 70-foot wide buffer from the existing homes to the north. We're showing that drainage easement maintained for the wash to the west, and then our large open space areas and trail corridors that are planned throughout the site. Here's our circulation plan, and you can see those trails that I was referring to going vertically through the site, and we're showing the town's proposed alignment for Hunt Highway to the south here in red. So we'll be in full conformance with the town's current proposal, and you can see we have planned access for future residential connections. Here's the water layout I was referring to. You can see we tie into Hunt Highway to the south here. I'll give you a second to look at that. And then here's our sewer layout. It's a conceptual layout, and you see we have a sewer line running west to Hunt Highway there. And these will be analyzed further and provided in more detail during the site planning process. Here's our open space amenity and trail plan. We have our centrally located park that I was referring to, along with those trail corridors, that buffer from the existing homes to the north, and that potential connectivity to the north if approved by Polty Homes. And here's that updated conceptual park plan. You can see we added another ramada, so we have plenty of opportunities for shaded seating. We have that open turf play area that's much more efficient than the smaller turf areas we were showing previously, so now we have a place where children can run around and families can enjoy. We kept those fitness stations and that trail, and we kept the playground in place. And our ramada design has remained the same. You can see we're going for more of a modern aesthetic. Here's our character reference board for those amenities. We have some examples of what the fitness stations would look like, what the playgrounds could look like, some seating areas and signage. Here's our entry monument plan. It remains the same from the study session. And the same with our entry monument elevations. You can see we're featuring that same limestone veneer and warm tones. Our wall and sign plan remain the same as well. Here's our wall elevations. You can see we're still featuring that limestone accented columns, and we have that note added regarding the residential side yard gates. So I'd just like to touch on the benefits of our proposal again. So we're establishing zoning for commercial opportunities in the town. We're committed to 13 acres of that commercial use, which could allow for shops, restaurants, and those desired neighborhood commercial services and employment opportunities. We have that wash preserved along the western property line, and we have support from the superintendent, and a school donation agreement will be finalized at the time of development. And of course, we're adding these new amenities, these activity nodes, parks, ramadas with the playground and fitness stations. We're proposing improvements on Ataway Road, and of course, will be upheld to these commitments through the town's plan review and permitting process moving forward. So as I mentioned previously, we're estimating about $5 million in development impact fees will be generated to support the town based on the town's current impact fee schedule, and it's estimated and subject to change, but that money will go towards parks and recreations, police and fire, roadway improvements, water and wastewater, however the town sees fit. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Vermillion. Commission members, questions?
If I may, Commissioner, you know, last time you presented this, I was impressed with how well you've planned out the amenities for, you know, for the community there. And I just, I was looking at it here, and you mentioned that you've reduced the number of lots from 588 to 541.
That's correct.
So when I'm looking at the site plan, and you're showing the lot sizes 45 feet by 115, is that from the reduction of the total number of lots? So are they bigger?
Oh, I will say that during the development agreement in 2020, that 588 was a conceptual number. I don't believe there was a site plan associated with it at the time. So that was, I believe that was a conceptual number that was agreed upon.
Oh, so this is reflecting the reduction, or the, yeah, reduction of total lots then?
Yes, exactly.
That's a total, that's a total, they would have been permitted to. They didn't have to, but they could have gone that high.
Oh, okay. So just three points, and you know, first of all, A, is it planned to have sidewalks on both sides of the street within that community?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, it's going to be per the standard local street section of the town.
Oh, good, okay. And then the other thing I noticed, and I know Lonnie pointed this out a meeting or two ago, the distance from the garage to the street was 20 feet.
Yes.
In my mind, I think that's too, that's too short. Most half-toned.
It'll be from the back of sidewalk. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but yeah, it'll be measured from the back of sidewalk to face of garage.
So it's more than 20 feet then?
The back of sidewalk will be the right-of-way and the property line. So it'll be 20 feet from the back of sidewalk.
Yeah, if I may, I'll throw in my two cents. We had a previous project that had 18-foot setbacks from the garage to the back of the sidewalk, and the research that I did said that a typical F-150 that most people drive is right at 19 feet, so I said we've got to have at least 20 feet.
Right.
So they should be okay there with the 20-foot.
Okay, I was just relating to my own stuckout in the sidewalk. And then the other is, just one more point, and that's the, the distance between homes is listed here to be 10 feet between.
Yes.
And I, in my mind, I think that's way too tight. That's, it's, 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 it doesn't really allow, it looks crowded in those kinds of communities, so.
Yes, and thank you for the feedback, and I understand that concern. I will say that we've designed this to fit the typical product that home builders are putting out these days. That would be a 35-foot wide housing product, which is standard and seen throughout the valley. On a 45-foot wide lot, that 35-foot wide product will have five feet on either side and that 10-foot separation. That is standard in the industry and what we typically do for subdivisions of this character.
So is this a starter home kind of community then?
Well, we don't have a home builder onboard yet, so the exact product will be determined at a later date, so we're not quite sure, but we do know that 45-foot wide lots are typical and highly desirable for home builders right now.
Okay, thank you.
Commission members, any other questions or concerns to raise?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, Commissioner Lehman, and then Mr. DeRosa.
Ms. Vermillion, Lot 1 and Lot 2 that is shown along Hunt Highway, is that where the commercial is going to be?
Yes, exactly.
And you haven't defined that at this point in time, right?
We have not. We do have a specific list of tailored uses in our PUD that were chosen to fit the compatibility of our site. So we've limited those uses to specific permitted uses, and then we will choose from those uses moving forward once we have a developer.
Okay. I noticed too that you have incorporated the movement of the intersection of Hunt and Ataway several hundred feet north, which will get the perpendicular intersection there so you can extend from it. A week ago Monday, when Mr. Salis, our city engineer, mentioned that while I was watching on Zoom, it got my attention because I didn't remember that you had already done that on here. So we are allowing that land. Is that, that's actually within your property and you're negotiating with the town to allow them to buy that land from you?
Yes, that's correct. We're in negotiations with the town. We've been working very closely with Mr. Salis, and we are in full support of the town's plan for Hunt Highway.
Are you familiar with any plans for the curve that's on the west side of your property?
Oh, I don't believe that we've incorporated anything outside of our property in our plan so far.
And just a footnote, that curve, I believe Chris is still in county right-of-way. There's a little section that is still part of the county versus the town right now.
Yeah, and I know that that was mentioned about moving the curve or making a different movement of it, so I guess I'll have to bring that up at a public hearing of the town council. One suggestion, the access into Anthem Parkside at the north side there. If you could move about three houses over into that blank area to the east, you would have a direct path up to that roundabout or cul-de-sac that's in Parkside, which would allow the children to go to Anthem K through A.
Okay, just to make sure I know exactly what you're talking about, I have the map pulled up here. So we're currently showing an access. It looks like it's about at the south of that cul-de-sac.
What I'm saying is, I'm sorry.
Mr. Lehman, Mr. Lehman, would you speak up? I can't hear you. Would you speak up, please? Thank you.
I'll get the microphone over here closer.
So you're looking for it to be moved about three houses over?
Move three of the lots east to that open area where you show the yellow or green arrow line. It would allow a direct access for the kids. They don't have to kind of jog there. Just, it's not a big change, but at least it would work the neighborhoods together a little better. We know that children are going to take that route to walk to school or ride their bikes or something like that.
Absolutely, yes, and if that access moves forward, we'll definitely take that into consideration and analyze the placement of that. Thank you for your feedback.
If we might, that would be an element of a preliminary plat when it came through, getting into the more specifics of the final lot layout. This is still conceptual at this point, so to apply for a final or a preliminary plat and then you would have a lot tighter look and review at that time.
Okay, no problem there. I just wanted to maybe get it in early so we could not have to make changes at a later date.
Absolutely, thank you. I appreciate that, and I'll make note of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Vermillion, the park area that you are showing here is 6.5 acres. Is that a retention basin at all, or is that strictly flat land, flat usable land?
Well, I believe we probably will be using a portion of that for retention, but we'll ensure that the majority of our amenities are kept high and dry for enjoyment year round.
Could you also consider the possibility of putting in some basketball courts, since this is a family community, or maybe some pickleball courts besides just passive park equipment that you intend to put there?
Oh, absolutely. Yep, we will definitely consider it. This is just a highly conceptual park plan, so these amenities can be switched out very easily, so we will.
Something that the children could have that would be a little bit more interact to go out and.
Absolutely.
Especially the older children.
That's true. Yep, I will go through and coordinate with our landscape designer to make sure that's incorporated moving forward.
Thank you. Have you also looked at levels of service, the traffic report from this particular project? What will the level of service, how will it be impacted on Hunt Highway?
Oh, you know, I have the traffic report right here. I don't know the level of service off the top of my head, but I can certainly get that information over to you.
Mr. Salis, would you have that information?
No, ma'am, I would not have that report memorized.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I would not have that entire report memorized. It would meet the requirement. It would meet the requirements of the town, which would be a level of service D, which would be consistent with the valley, Penal County, and every other development community. So that would be the requirement, but I would not know their particular.
Do we, is the level of service on Hunt Highway generally within acceptable terms, or are we, or are we at F?
Along Hunt Highway generally, I would, I would assume that it would be within, well, within acceptable, yes. The, the intersection of Hunt and Addaway during certain parts of the day would not be acceptable.
Thank you. Ms. Vermillion, do you know what the expected trip generation is going to be from this particular project, and how that will impact any traffic on Hunt Highway?
Unfortunately, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but it is in this report, so I can definitely find that for you.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's the only questions I have at the moment, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a few comments. One, the packet that we got caused me to have extreme frustration this evening as I went over it in detail compared to the one that we had previously, and, and my packet was the exact same. And so now that I see what you're doing, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you, sorry.
So much of, so much of what we asked for is here, and I really, really appreciate it.
Absolutely, and this is all incorporated, we just need to get that, that new packet put out and presented.
And Maricel, this is actually part of the staff report, so I'll ask that question as well, under development standards, words are used here on the second paragraph, builders are urged to create housing designs that prioritize anti-stagger front yard setbacks to prevent streets from being dominated by garages, and a few lines down, alternatively, builders are encouraged to diversify housing orientations and increase front setbacks. Why are we using such weak words? Aren't we requiring things like this if this is the standard that we want?
Which page?
This would be on page six of 13, under development standards.
Standards.
The second paragraph, builders are urged, and then the last line, encouraged. That's something that we want, I think we should use stronger language, that, I, I think those are great things to, to have, and I think most builders by nature, most developers by nature, want to do that, so that was just my concern there, that we were using weak words, so.
I will beef them up for the next report then.
Okay. And I, and I echo Commissioner Pro's concerns, when, when I saw the five-yard setback, or the five-foot setback, I actually went out this afternoon and took a tape measure, pushed my garbage can against the wall, and figured out five feet, and the garbage can is three feet, and so there's just a little, I mean, if we're trying to encourage people to take their garbage cans off the street, bring them into their side yards, there's not a whole lot of room when you have five-foot setbacks, so.
That's right.
And I, I know we're well along in this, and this is the standard, but boy, that's a tough standard, with, with three-foot garbage cans and four-foot gates. And a concern on, so this would be your developer report, Coen Van Lu's report, page This is the South driveway, Addaway and Hunt driveway of Addaway Road. This talks about, southbound approach should provide a center turn lane and one shared through right lane. But this is called out to be a minor collector with 60 feet of right-of-way. It doesn't look like you can do all of that in that right-of-way. Are we expanding the right-of-way at that intersection to make that happen?
We are actually proposing the project next door on Addaway tonight, so we have two PADs right now. We have this Addaway and then the next Addaway, and they're both proposing improvements on Addaway.
Right, and, but it's, and both of them are talking about it being a minor collector, which doesn't have sufficient right-of-way to pull off what you're saying you're going to do here. That's why I'm asking to make sure that we're not compromising your, what your verbiage here, because we won't be able to build it in that right-of-way. There's only a 60-feet of right-of-way.
I believe, oh, it looks like we're, I believe that language was taken from the traffic report, and we're currently showing it on circulation plan as a major collector. So maybe that's a typo on, on my end, my apologies.
That's, I, I think I, I think I must have been caught in that same thing I was caught in this afternoon, I've got the old version.
Oh, yep, that, that might be the case, so we'll make sure that that's updated and addressed.
Now that I see on this one that you have it listed as a major collector, we're good. Thank you, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
You did not show the major collector cross-section in your presentation this evening, and we were concerned last time about trying to put a tree in a five-foot planning area adjacent to the roadway and having the tree have that nice notched landscape feature when trucks go by and cut it out because it's crowded in there? Is, is there a new version of that as well?
I believe we'll be following the town standard section for Addaway. So if there is, if there is concern about landscaping the right-of-way, we, we can ensure that it between this, are you referring to the landscape buffer between the sidewalk and the?
Back of the curb.
Back of curb?
Yeah.
We can ensure that that's shrubbery.
Yeah, there's only a five-foot area in there, and we have the trees being trimmed by trucks, or we have the root system as it develops heaving curb and gutter.
Absolutely.
It's too close.
We can keep that to shrubbery with the trees on the other side of the sidewalk, absolutely.
That would be good, and Chris probably would appreciate that, so he doesn't have to worry about the curb and gutter. Okay, page 11, you were kind enough to show us, and you might want to bring those back up, the water layout and the wastewater layout, in particular, bring up the wastewater layout. There you go. While this is great information, I think we were more concerned about the aesthetics of the water campus and the proposed lift station, where they were going to be located, and what was going to be viewed by the people in the area, since we're very concerned with aesthetics as the planning and zoning commission. So layout is, is awesome, but knowing where those campuses are going to be and what, what the design elements are to make sure that they're, they work well with, with what you've proposed here was our biggest concern.
Oh, understood, my apologies for missing the mark on that one.
No, it's okay.
I have the project engineer Doug Chubin with me tonight. Doug, would you be able to speak to that?
Hi there, I'm Doug Chubin with Coen Van Lu. The sewer layout that you see in front of you is a gravity system, there will not be a lift station. As far as a water campus, that'll be determined by EPCOR. The convenience and necessity area, they are extending their boundaries so that we will have EPCOR water at this location.
Okay, so, so at this point in time, you've not even designated a location for?
Well, we don't know if, if EPCOR needs a water campus on this particular site.
It's, maybe I've got the old version of the report again, because it's called out in here, so, that there'll be a water campus and there'll be a lift station. It sounds like you're saying that based on the layout here, you were able to gravity flow the whole system, you don't need a lift station.
At one time, we were talking about having a lift station on this southwest portion in here.
Right.
In coordination with EPCOR, they would prefer not to have yet another lift station. They have other projects in the area, and they would rather that we make our investment by crossing the wash in the location shown as a gravity sewer.
Awesome. I hate lift stations too. Had to run a few of those, and they're not fun, so, yeah, this is great, thank you.
Thank you.
And so this is one of those weak words in, in your report, Ms. Vermillion, on page 18, second line, "A variety of distinct roof styles is suggested."
Correct. Unfortunately, as we don't know who the end user will be, we're not sure exactly which style they're going to pick, so we want to make sure to leave it a little open for that flexibility. As you know, there's a ton of different home building styles out there, but we want to make sure that, you know, we're available to, to home builders out there that may be interested in the site.
I understand that thought process, but whatever style, let's say they pick a Mediterranean style, there's two or three sub-styles within that that they can provide, so I, I would suggest, suggest, there's another weak word, let's strengthen that, say it's required or something, so that they know that they're, can't just come in with just one roof style.
Okay, maybe we can strengthen the language to talk more regarding quality of the product?
Yep, that'd be great. And I, I really appreciate, and Commissioner Lehman brought it up with the connection to the north. I actually went out and drove out there this evening to see if there was any walled areas, no, it's open, it's nice open. There's actually in that, that one area that's almost directly to the north, it looks like an open space retention, further a little bit further north, there's actually a concrete path that goes to the north through there.
Oh.
For, to move people, so yeah, I highly encourage that we do something, and I don't know if that means staff needs to go out and meet with Polte or whoever, but yeah, let's, let's make that happen, I think that'd be a tremendous asset.
All right, we'll do our best to negotiate with that.
And with all the changes that you showed us, I'm happy. Thank you very much.
I'm so glad to hear that. Thank you very much for hearing our case and your feedback, it's much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioners, any other?
Mr. Chairman, would you have, would you mind if I asked Ms. Vermillion another question?
Oh, please.
You have the traffic, the traffic study with you.
I do, I have it right here, I just need to go through it to get those numbers for you. I have, I found the level of service.
And the expected trip generations out of the project?
So the level of service analysis has determined that, oh, you know what, I'm sorry, this doesn't have the exact level of service defined in here, I'm going to have to go through, I read more than the summary.
You're asking us to approve a project tonight without knowing what the levels of service and impact are on a major?
I, I believe that it was up to town standard to get this approved. But I can speed read through this and try to find it.
Do you have my colleagues know what the trip generation is, or what the level of service is on the road, or how many trips, how many trips are projected from this project?
Let me ask Lisa a quick question from protocol. There's probably several up here that don't quite understand what level of service means.
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, there's, there are probably several up here that don't understand what level of service means, is it okay to explain that, or do we need to, okay. Level of service is kind of like your report card when you used to go to school, it's an A through F, and quite often roads, depending on the time of the day, will have an A, and then at peak times, you're going to be in the, you know, the Ds and Fs and whatnot, and so that's what the question is, just give us a letter of, of level of service so that we.
And, and the trip generation from this project, how much more traffic will be put on, on Hunt Highway?
Right.
We've been talking about that for a while.
Mr. Chairman, is there possibly, it would help, I think, the other commissioners, if we had the closed captioning on here? Can we get that turned on?
Yeah, it's hard, the sound in here is difficult.
So I found the trip generation here, it says the project is anticipated to generate a total of 11,596 daily trips, 565 trips entering and exiting during the AM hour, and 911 trips during the PM peak hour. It states that the greatest hourly entering volume occurs during the PM hour, with 518 entering trips anticipated.
Thank you.
And I'll find the level of service for you.
Mr. Chairman, maybe in future, we could ask staff to include that kind of information in the, so that we know how many trips the project is going to generate, especially since we have so many challenges with infrastructure and traffic, roads not being able to handle what's going on. Maybe we can get that in our staff packets.
That's a great suggestion, now should, can we make that just common knowledge on, the common stuff you put in every staff report for developments like this?
Yes.
Awesome.
That was easy.
Okay, so it mentions that level of service will operate at or above D.
At or above E.
And it does say the existing conditions in, in 2023 were currently operating at D.
Thank you. So if I could follow up on that a little bit, because at the last council meeting, I know Director Salas and our vice mayor, we had quite a long discussion about the traffic situation exactly at this point at Addaway Road and Hunt Highway. And I'm trying to understand, there's a little bit of verbiage in here on page 10 that talks about, "The developer will pay regional impact fees per lot due to likelihood of the development preceding the town improvements. The issuance of a certificate of occupancy will not be contingent on town road improvements, however, the developer must provide a bond." I'm trying to understand this, are we saying that, I know, Mr. Salas, it's taking a while to get that curve out and get the T, so are we saying the developer can go ahead and develop, and we have that traffic impact before we fix that intersection?
I can't necessarily speak to what that language, how it's being interpreted. The purpose of that language, though, is to say that that project is a town project, it is a regional improvement, and it couldn't be necessarily done by a sole developer. This, this idea goes back probably now almost four to five years, when it was, this whole thing is usually referred to as a major investment study or design concept report, and it was not the sole responsibility of either the Felix property, or Barclay, or Riggins, or this property, it was a regional project. So it is staying to be a regional project as of today. I cannot speak to CFOs or issuance thereof, but the, the transportation improvement is being borne by the town through development impact fees, whether they be development impact fees or development impact fee credits for this project. It all ends up being one and the same, is that they are paying for their, if you will, pro rata along their frontage based on those assessed fees. So that's, that's how that project is going to be funded. And to, I guess, further clarify, as the town has, has, on the engineering side, has completed, the construction manager at risk scope of work, I'm being told that should be, again, advertised within the next 30 days, the design is underway, and we are working on a design that we can hopefully have a lot more control of our own destiny, still understanding that the San Carlos irrigation project will still need some permitting in that area in order to have those tapers fit within that distance, because 400 feet will not be enough to taper back and have no impact on that. So we are looking at a minimal improvement versus a full improvement in how those impacts will have. And we will take that back to council and allow them to have input on that final implementation, because there was conversation about, we just want to do it once?
Right, right.
Well, there is the ability to provide some relief in the interim if we cannot do the entirety, and again, staff will have to evaluate that, but this is a much-needed project. So if we can add turn lanes in, in an interim condition, and move the intersection and make it safe, and put the traffic signal where it belongs, and improve level of service dramatically by removing the split phasing that occurs at this intersection, I think we need to highly consider an interim improvement, even in the, even in the, again, in-between time of maybe, it might be a year before we have the San Carlos irrigation project approvals. It has not occurred so far, so I don't want to assume that it's 60 days out or 90 days out. If the ability is there for us to do a project that improves things significantly, that is what I will be presenting at that point, even if it is not the ultimate improvement of that intersection.
Thank you, and I understand only certain matters under your, your control. I think the discussion went at the council meeting that, I know one of the council members expressed frustration, it's been a six-year project just trying to get the approval so that you can do what you need to do. And that's my concern, the timing of this, so already, if you drive down Hunt Highway during rush hour, that traffic is backed up past the Safeway at that intersection. I'm really concerned about adding construction right at that point. So we already are in a very bad situation, and I'm not hearing that we're in control of our destiny as to how and when we can make even some improvements to that road to alleviate before we add more traffic.
One of the benefits, since you listened to the council meeting, was that the One of the benefits since you listened to the council meeting was that the majority of this improvement would be built off of the roadway. So a majority of it wouldn't impact the current operations, just the, the days of the tie-in. That actually is a, is a great benefit to the community to be able to build this entire alignment offside of that and just the final tie-ins rather than shedding down the entire road for tens, if not 90-plus days on the construction. So there is some benefit to mitigate some of your concerns that a majority of it would happen offline, if you will, probably the best way of stating it. Offline, the current alignment, that roadway would be constructed as much as possible. And that is the reason why staff has chosen to go again, that C-MAR approach, contract manager at risk um, approach, so that they can design a, or implement the design as effective as possible. And that's what's occurring right now at the Roundabout Project. Um, during the ADOT process, we develop a plan, we develop traffic control plans, we do all that because that's their policy. But every project I've done with ADOT, when the contractor finally gets it, they basically throw away all those and they, they show us how it really should be done, saving the taxpayers dollars, time, um, safety concerns. They're the ultimate experts on implementing a project. So that would be the same thing here. And that's the benefit of bringing on that C-MAR.
You're saying there could be some improvements parallel with the development?
Yeah, but I'm, what I'm just saying is, is that by having it off of the current alignment, there's a, a benefit to the, to everybody that a lot of that construction would occur. Even if, even if this project doesn't move forward, um, in a year, two years, three years, four years, five years, there's still the benefit of that alignment being shifted and all those improvements getting done.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna show Vice Chair just a picture here. This is, this is the alignment of it right now. So they can build this whole piece and then just open it up and no impacts. Good stuff.
Thank you.
Yep. Very good. And so just, Chris, not to put words in your mouth, but it sounds like we're being, we're taking the actions necessary so that when this project comes online, some improvement in that roadway, whether it's the full desired um, realignment of Hunt Highway and Addaway is in place or something in the interim will be in place so that this, the impact of this project can be, can be better absorbed.
Well, I'll put words into my own mouth. I hope that we are far in front of this project by the time that they do all their construction, offsite construction here. Um, but there is always the concern, again, of San Carlos irrigation project. That is going to be a concern. The idea is, is that there is a lot of construction that could occur without maybe some of those impacts. And we are still concurrently working on what is referred to as the T-91 project to get those, at least the envelope of those improvements approved. The idea would be is if we got, if we got, let's just say 70 feet of width of improvement there and the turn lane shown, what we would do is we would take that envelope and we would taper out to the wider T-112 project. And so that's, that's the goal in doing that. Um, but like I said, I wanna make sure we take whatever we can, as soon as we can in this design process and put something out there. Um, I think that the current design is looking at somewhere to be completed in um, early November, late October. And we are currently working on getting under contract the same um, company that we've used in the past for all the right-of-way acquisitions. That is, that is the big push right now, is meeting with the individual stakeholders, determining which ones will um, actively want to work with the town in, in an appraisal process and in a, versus a eminent domain process and to see if there are any um, dedications, donations available as well. So that is, that is our biggest push right now is acquiring that right-of-way. We have an alignment that any day now will be converted over to a 60-set design plans, probably in late May. Once we have those 60% design plans, we'll be able to sit with each and every property owner and, and, and walk them through this here. As a whole, um, the majority of property owners, I think, are in extreme support of the project. They know this is an issue. Um, but there are current and existing, at least a farmer, if you will, that may not necessarily be as in support of this project because they're, they're not necessarily benefiting. They're not planning on developing, you know, a strip mall anytime soon. So each and every person is afforded those protections under the law and we will follow, again, ADOT's process on, on property right-of-way acquisition to a T.
So maybe something that at least I don't understand. What, what's the boundaries of this project? What's the east end and the west end, I guess?
Um, the project literally ties in at the curve where there's six lanes transitioning to two lanes. We would take that four lanes all the way through the Addaway intersection and approximately 1,200 feet to the east of the Addaway intersection. So we would finally taper back. Um, it would be back on the alignment and it would be back down to two lanes. Um, I think the last time I looked, approximately the same thing, about 900 feet south of the new intersection. So it'd be about 500, 600 feet south of the existing Addaway-Hunt intersection to the south to provide additional, again, lanes in that area. So that would be um, left-hand lane, left turn lanes, right turn lanes, the receiving lanes, um, that would all improve, again, the intersection capacity. And then anything east of, well, it'd be, be east of this development, east of, basically post-emute where um, the Anthem development, that is looking today using some type of, again, linear extrapolation. We would be looking at widening that somewhere in 2033 all the way out. But again, that would assume uninterrupted growth as of today. And that's not always very typical, but it's, it's very possible. We could have a long run. Um.
Well, it's, it's nice to know that at least for this portion of the project, we have a very willing developer and, and that wants to donate that land or whatever the process is on the north side. So yeah, let's make this happen. This is, this, it'd be nice to get the D, average D service level improved in here. Yeah.
The um, the applicant who's obviously here tonight has been a proponent of working with the town for the last 18 months as the study kinda started and went through fruition. And the idea, the understanding that an orthogonal intersection, a 90-degree intersection is safer for all, it provides, again, it removes the split phasing. It's a benefit not to that, just this project, but it is a benefit to the region. So.
To the region. Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. So I guess we need to take action on 7B.
We need to open a public hearing.
That's right. You gotta keep me honest. I keep, I always forget to do that. This is a, a public hearing item. Is there anyone that would like to speak um, in our audience this evening on this? Larry, it looks like you need to say something. Is that correct? No? Okay.
And if you're online and you would like to speak in this public hearing, please raise your hand in the Zoom.
It looks like we'll close the public hearing. There's not anyone that'd like to comment on this one. And with that, we will entertain a motion for item 7B.
I'll make a motion that we approve. Uh, Addaway Crossings PUD, PZ-23-25 with the staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval, for recommendation of approval by Vice Chair Adams, second by Commissioner Lehman. All in favor? I'm, for, um, Addaway Crossings Planned Unit Development, PZ-2325. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We're good for that one. Okay, Maudie Sella, uh, 7C.
Presentation, public hearing, recommendation of approval and approval with conditions or denial of the northwest corner of Addaway and Hunt Highway Planned Unit Development, PZ-22-42.
All right. Northeast corner of Addaway and Hunt Way, highway. It is the same consultant, CVL, as well as the applicant and the landowner. The goal is to rezone this from rural agriculture RA-10 to a planned unit development. The conceptual plan is meant to welcome more commercial development and not just residential or a combination as in the previous PUD. The proposed plan includes community entrances with landscape buffers, walls, fencing, and all the requirements that we are set in our development code. There'll be a architectural theme that is similar and cohesive to what's being built across the way. And the plan is meant to help anticipate future market conditions while addressing the needs of the service for the neighborhood nearby. There are 14 stipulations in this one due to its size being much smaller than the previous PUD. And it's meant to enhance the number of commercial uses that are allowed in that area. So this is the site we are discussing tonight. Before I hand it over to our representatives, the overall findings that we found, because of its commercial focus, it, it's, it doesn't propose any neighborhoods as you would find in a suburban neighborhood. General plan zoning, however, it still provides services that are needed or can help those neighborhoods grow and be within reach of certain needs. It is a similar access as to that northwest corner. So you are getting access up on Hunt Highway and Addaway Road. The development of Addaway Road will be built on both sides because it is going to be the same group. And the northeast corner of Addaway and Hunt Highway, PUD, will add more commercial opportunities and just be in the better interest general well, general welfare of the public as we have heard that people are very interested in providing those commercial opportunities to town of Florence. I will welcome back Julie Vermillion up for her presentation on this side.
Okay. Um, once again, my name is Julie Vermillion, um, with the applicant, Cohen Van Leeu, consultants located at 4550 North Wall Street in Phoenix. And with me tonight is Doug Chubin, the engineer. Uh, this is the northeast corner of Addaway and Hunt. So directly next to the prior project. And again, I'd like to go over some updates that we've made since the last study session. Um, we've incorporated alphabetical characters to identify the driveways along the perimeter of the site. Um, according to the traffic impact analysis, so we have clarification and there's correspondence between the two. Um, we've illustrated that potential pedestrian connection, subject to approval by Pulte Homes as discussed. We've clarified that the existing homestead on the side is to remain or develop with Phase Two, um, with approval by the property owner. And we've enhanced the photos of our character boards to better represent the intent for this proposal. So our existing zoning here is RA-10 and we're proposing overall PUD. Here's a map that I presented last time, just showing the commercial property in the area. You can see we could definitely benefit from additional commercial uses. Here's our site plan. We're identifying um, our end cap, drive-throughs and smaller storefronts along Hunt Highway in Phase One, um, with Phase Two to remain for future market-driven commercial uses, uh, in accordance to our PUD and the permitted uses that we identify um, that are specifically tailored to this property. We call out that existing homestead shaded in yellow. And this uh, site plan is highly conceptual, um, but it does demonstrate the intent that we're moving forward with in this PUD. I'll give you a second to look at it. Okay, here's our, our site plan here in color. We have our driveways that are um, lettered according to the TIA. So you can see that each of these access points has been analyzed in the report. We have that potential pedestrian golf cart connection to the north, uh, subject to approval by Pulte Homes, which we will coordinate with and negotiate with accordingly. Um, and you can see their current plan that they have to the north here in Anthem has a significant landscape buffer um, between our site and the local street and from that local street to the homes. So there's plenty of, of buffering already included in that plan for Anthem. Here's the same circulation plan where we're showing that the town's current alignment proposed for Hunt Highway. We're showing that connectivity. Um, we're showing uh, Addaway as a major collector. Um, and we have those entrances identified off of Hunt. Here's our concept signage and wall concept photos. This is just high-level concepts to show the intent for the design of the project. Here's our updated character board. You can see we have some higher quality photos demonstrating the wide variety of uses that were currently proposed in the PUD. And I'll give you a second to look at it. And then we've maintained our prior character boards with the retail and drive-through food stores. Gas and automotive services and office. So just some images to show the intended uses. And I'll go over some of the benefits of our proposal, just to remind you from our study session. Um, we're establishing the zoning for commercial use to allow those desired shops, restaurants and neighborhood commercial services and employment opportunities. We're proposing those improvements on Addaway Road as discussed. And of course, we'll be upheld to these commitments through the town's plan and permitting process moving forward. And I'm available to answer any questions. Oh, and I would like to note, I'm sorry, um, the level of service um, is again, uh, operating at or above D. And then the trip generation, a total of um, 11,548 daily trips, 731 AM peak hour trips and 820 PM peak hour trips. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Ronald Vermillion. Um, commission members? Questions? Comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to um, actually make a few comments. The, um, you, you have as part of this commercial plan, RV storage, which is uh, in high demand here. So I would encourage you to look at that part of the project moving forward as expeditiously as possible. And I think that might drive some of your retail components by putting in the RV storage. There's a high demand here locally for people, we have a lot of RVs here, believe it or not. And they're always looking for someplace to park their RV close to home. So just a suggestion that you might wanna give some consideration to. And thank you for those traffic uh, report information.
Absolutely. Thank you. And yes, as you've noted, many HOAs don't allow RV parking. So yeah, people need a place to put them. So we will consider that use in the future.
Mr. Chairman, yeah. Um, I'm, I'm, my, I'm curious to know uh, how you will be marketing this commercial area. Do you have people lined up now? I mean, I like this, you know, the board, um, and of course, it's Commissioner Tillerosa, but um, other businesses, are there people lined up?
Oh, well, thank you. Um, so the site plan that we're providing is purely conceptual based on what we believe the demand may be. Um, we do not currently have an end user on board, um, but we are negotiating. And once we get this commercial zoning in, I think it'll drive more interest in the property.
Okay. Yeah, I'm very enthusiastic about having some, you know, services available to us there in Merrill Ranch. So anyway.
That's great to hear.
Thank you.
Mr. Lehman?
The only thing I kinda noticed on, on your plots along here is there's a, looks like a, a pretty good wash there right there.
Make sure to speak into the mic, please.
I gotta peek into the microphone better. I need this microphone over further, I think. Um, there's a, looks like a pretty good-sized wash there. Uh, says 200 cubic feet per second. There's a, looks like a pretty good-sized wash there, says 200 cubic feet per second that goes all the way down to Hunt. And you've got one of your pads sticking right on top of it. You got any details about how you're going to handle that wash?
Again, I'm Doug Chubin with Cohen Van Louw. Polte is handling their stormwater to the north of us. We actually believe at this point, because they have chosen to develop further, and we saw that in one of our slides, we are anticipating no flow coming from the north at this point.
Okay. Presently, though, there is flow from the open area north of your plat right here.
It's under development right now.
I don't think that's actually, it's further east if they're doing 51.
And that's the graph that I'm talking about. The, to the north of us, you can see on this conceptual plan, you've got Polte fully lotted out in all of that area, along with that cul-de-sac roadway. They have handled their flow. We don't believe that we're going to see 200 CFS going through this development.
Sounds good.
Okay, a couple of questions. This might be for Chris. I noted on page three of their report, the widening of Hunt Highway, intersection of Hunt Highway and Addaway Road, and any required singleization are part of the town's capital improvement plan. You spoke to them contributing the pro-rata share of the regional impact. Is that equivalent to the typical development building, the half-street?
There is no exact equivalency. Sometimes a developer may actually pay more based on the amount of lots they have than their frontage, and sometimes it may be less. I didn't actually go backwards and look at the calculation on this particular development, but if you are, let's say, not shallow with respect to your offset with the roadway, you would be actually paying a lot more in physical improvements than you might if you were to be based on just dedication through development impact fee credit. So there's not an exact formula on there, and I did not look to see necessarily of that part. This project is being assessed their full development impact fees, just like many others in this area. But because it's a regional improvement, they are not necessarily obligated to do those half-street improvements as part of their project.
Yeah, this is kind of a strange project with the triangular nature of it. So you had a lot of, a lot of frontage with not a lot of depth, so it makes an interesting scenario.
Yeah, I mean, again, I apologize. The philosophy of how this was going to be built because of the scale of it was decided years ago as it relates to certain people maybe getting, like you said, a benefit, but you couldn't do this project property by property. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be feasible. So the town took this project on as a greater whole, which is very common for something that is going to be considered a regional facility.
And then maybe, oh, go ahead. I'll ask the consultant team the first one. When I look at Exhibit F and Exhibit H, I was trying to figure out the distance between the access points, just from my own thought process. When I apply the scale found on Exhibit F, they're 1,200 feet apart. When I apply the scale on Exhibit H, they're about 650 feet apart. So one of the other, those, the scale is messed up on it. So what's the right answer? And I guess, and then the corollary to that, I'd like to hear from Chris again, with a, I miss, Hunt is kind of a road of regional significance, a big people mover. Are we limiting access to a certain minimum distances for driveways so that we move people well?
Wow, I remember how young I was, the first iteration of the RIS-RAM study, and the discussion about, again, access management, access management guidelines. The town's access management guidelines do reside within our transportation plan. So yes, we do have access management guidelines that we do our best to limit full-access driveways to such-and-such spacing, and the same thing with right-in, right-out spacing, and the challenges of how that fits within a large-scale residential development and a commercial. So this actually just happened at one of the most recent council meetings, again, this discussion of the benefit of large-scale master plan communities. So the engineering department, regardless of a commercial element, is not owned by that current residential developer. We still require, just as the county does, for them to model that as part of their traffic impact analysis, because what will happen later on, if we don't understand those access requirements of the commercial, they'll come in and they'll want five driveway cuts, two full accesses, two traffic signals, and then, on the other side, we're going to have multiple traffic signals, and it won't work comprehensively. So.
So yes, we do have those guidelines, and does this, as we're seeing the layout here, although I'm confused of what the spacing is, does it meet our guidelines for access off that major roadway?
I believe that our access requirements are a minimum of 660, so your scale of 650 makes sense to me. But I do, I think one of the things moving forward, based on what I'm hearing tonight, is I'm going to have to work, obviously, with the chair on our reporting requirements to outline some of these specific engineering requirement details as far as maybe traffic generation, level of service as a general level of service at an intersection, some of these kind of things in there. So there will be some future communication on how we summarize some of this requested information so that we don't have to fumble through reports during a meeting. It would be beneficial for all if we understood what those requirements would be and stuff like this. We can detail in our report. It's not, it's not cumbersome for us to do it upfront as we're reviewing it, once we kind of create a general template.
Okay, so we'll, even though this is later in the agenda, we'll ask that you do that on a future agenda and educate everybody. Appreciate that.
Yeah, no, I mean, like I said, if we all work together to understand what things want to be, I guess, illustrated, we'll gladly work with Ms. Benitez or Mr. Harmer on future reports to include these elements, if you will. Absolutely.
Well, and before we get to there, do an educational session with us so that we know what to look for, and we know the terminology and expectations when we see them. Since you're going to change your way of doing this, then we'll understand what to expect when we see them. Awesome. We appreciate that.
We will most definitely eliminate the use of acrimens in the written report. I may have violated that tonight. I don't really remember if I did, but we will definitely include that. And we also can publish a small paper for everybody upfront to kind of keep on the side every time and say, oh, I remember what level of service means as respects to a volume versus capacity equation. We'll put all that together.
Yeah, we'll expect an educational session in the near future. Thank you very much. And so what is the correct answer on spacing in here?
All right, so again, I apologize if the scaling is inconsistent, but this is a highly conceptual layout. We don't have the exact driveways that we're planning to do nailed down. That will be determined during the preliminary site planning process, which is going to be the next step after the zoning approval. So this is just a highly conceptual plan. So I think you were right in your assumption. It'll probably be, it'll be consistent with the town's guidelines.
Okay. All righty, thank you. Commission members, any other?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one other comment here or question. I see that the Site H that you have up on the screen now reflects a few changes from what's in our packet, especially up there in the northwest corner, where you talk about A-optional. Looks like you're proposing as a possible entry into the RV area, another entrance, but how is that going to affect the houses as you extend Addaway up to that point?
Oh, so that's a great catch. From our prior meeting, we were asked to incorporate our TIA driveway identifiers on this plan. The TIA was written at a time when an entry at that location may have been considered and wanted to be considered for some flexibility. Currently, you can see our Addaway crossing, we're ending the improvements at that connection with the subdivision to the west, so we're currently not proposing that A-optional anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch. Anything else? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it, open the public hearing. Is there anyone in our audience this evening that would like to speak to us? And in our digital audience, if you digitally raise your hand, if you'd like to comment Looks like there's no one at this point that would like to comment, so we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to our commission members for action. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the northeast corner of Addaway and Hunt Highway PUD, PZ-22-42 with the staff stipulations.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Chair Adam and a second by Commissioner Lehman for approval of PZ-22-42 with the stipulations. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. All in favor, please say nay. Oh, we had five. Yep, we're good. Thank you. Thanks for your presentations this evening. Appreciate your traveling out here.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Can I say something, Commissioner? Before, Chris, before you leave, I wanted to thank you for being here to answer our questions tonight. As a town engineer, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Solis. Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions for Mr. Solis. I thought we'd, I'd hold it to the end of the meeting, but if he's leaving, should I ask them now?
Are they agenda-ized, or should we, do we need to?
I'm sorry.
Are they agenda-ized?
No, it was just requests for information.
Okay.
I can wait. I can wait.
Yeah, well, when we come to the commission comments, call to the commission.
I thought I'd hold it for.
We can do that then.
Thank you.
Okay, let's do that. Item 7D, Presentation, Public Hearing, Recommendation of Approval, Approval with Conditions or Denial of Modifications to the Lot Dimension Requirements of the Highway Business Commercial Zone B2. Staff presentation?
Yes. Coming back to you one more time, the development for minimum requirements for lot size in the B2, as well as the lot coverage percentage. We had proposed change to remove those lot dimensions of 200 feet and 100 feet for width and depth, and the change the lot coverage 55%. I did find that there was a lot coverage of 60%. So if we want to look to change to 55%, that is okay as well. It still falls well within that range. In terms of research, I have the setbacks here. We have 25 feet in the front, 10 feet on the sides, 20 feet on the street sides, as well as 10 feet in the rear. And 10 feet in the front of that area shall be set aside or kept as landscaping, and the access driveway may go through it as well. One of the major points that was brought up in the last one is how does removing, is there anything that keeps these commercial buildings in line if we take away these widths and depths? One of the things that did keep them in line is the parking requirement. Businesses or that have plots must meet our parking requirements set within our development code, Chapter 150. If it's commercial retail, which is what you'll see in most of these B2 highway commercial areas, you'll have one space per every 200 square feet of gross floor area. We also included that if it's a restaurant or a tavern, those are usually one space per 50 gross floor area. And then there'll be additional parking if there is patio seating as well. Now, that's only for the B2 area. Some of these parking requirements may change if there's a different type of zone, but specifically for tonight, we're looking at the B2 zoning. Now, the parking keeps that building in check because you must have that parking, you must meet that requirement, and thus the building can expand beyond what may be proposed if a developer is looking for something substantial. And of course, the setbacks also keep it in check from going to property line. The reason this B2 change came forward is we did have some developers who were having trouble developing their lots because they could not meet that 200 to 100 minimum lot depth and width. We did research in other towns and cities. Beforehand, we brought you five different towns and cities that are close to our types of development. We had Morana, Casa Grande, Coolidge, and the town of Gilbert, as well as the city of Chandler. We also looked at the town of Queen Creek. A lot of these areas either didn't have a lot minimum width, or they kept it within 100 feet, or had some other type of lot coverage, which is where that 55% came from in the last meeting. There was that set in the town of Gilbert. We continued our research to other cities and towns within the Phoenix metropolitan area, which includes Avondale, Buckeye, Litchfield Park, Apache Junction, and Goodyear. These had a variety of, a larger variety of commercial zonings than we did, so some of their maximum or minimum lot widths and depths, they either didn't have one, or it changed up based on the vigorous nature of that commercial zoning. You still have minimum lot widths that are, for the most part, below what we are requiring, be it 50 feet or 100 feet. And some of them, such as Buckeye, went specifically towards more of those lot coverages. Taking away, having that lot coverage percentage, and then taking away those lot widths and depths, we don't see that will hinder or prevent development. We don't see it as a disadvantage, and this is why we're asking for this to move ahead as a code amendment. Are there any questions? And I'd like to thank my coworker, Andrew Burkelbach. He was ill today, but he did a lot of that research, and I kind of wish he was here to present it, but I don't want anyone else to follow.
Great. Thank you. Commission members, any concerns or questions on this one? First off, I'll apologize because I completely missed the 60% last time.
I did as well, so I apologize.
And I think if I would have seen that, we probably wouldn't even have needed to continue this. Sorry.
Would we like to keep it at 60% or change to the 55%?
I'm fine with 60%.
I agree.
Just leave it there. And I guess something else that came up when I looked this up online and did a little bit of research, also noticed that currently the tourist commercial, TRC, and the professional office, PO, zoning also has minimum lot dimensions and coverage. And I'm wondering if we want to just clear all of this up at once?
Those would have to come back through a code amendment process because they are separate, and I would need to do public notices as well as hearings. I do agree with the tourist area, I believe we're in favor of getting rid of that zoning entirely because there is nothing within the Town of Florence that is zoned for that. I believe getting rid of it would be beneficial because what the tourist district does is pretty much similar to what the downtown commercial and the highway business commercial does as well. So there's no need to have such a repetitive zoning. That's something we can bring back later as a amendment.
Great. Well, at the commission's discretion, I'm happy with 60%. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, if I might just add a little, just to reinforce the positive nature of making this change, the just previous project that you just looked at, if you noticed, they had individual pads and lots shown in there. The vast majority of them would not meet the current 200 by 100 standard, but at the same time, it's a cohesive development plan. The other thing is on those types of situations, as they would come through, if they decide to plat it, they, you know, again, they wouldn't be able to meet the current standard. And at the same time, we will be requiring cross-access easements in order to facilitate curb cuts out on the Hunt Highway and those. curb cuts out on the Hunt Highway and those cut projects, or anywhere else where that type of a, um, project might come forward, which, you know, is very likely in the future. So just to reinforce the whole thought process behind removing these particular dimensions, uh, it's going to manifest itself in numerous benefits around the town.
I agree. Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it to the public for, uh, comments. Do we have anybody here that would like to comment on this one, or? Anybody digitally online? If you're online and would like to comment, please raise your hand. Looks like there's no one that would like to comment, so we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for a motion. Sorry. Well, I, I can make that motion. Move for Recommendation of Approval of Modification to the Lot Dimension Requirements of the Highway Business Commercial Zone B2 and, um, amending the staff report for a 60% lot coverage.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion by the chair and a, a second by the vice chair for approval of this with the amendment for lot coverage at 60%. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, we're off now to Agenda Item Number Eight, Director's Report for Future Agenda Items.
I will speak on that one. In our next meeting, we'll have our Florence 287 preliminary plat due to the passing of the Florence 287 Planned Unit Development on Monday. In addition, on our second meeting in May, we will, we have an application for a conditional use permit for the vacant land that is just north of Jalapenos. We have a group that is looking to put a drive-through restaurant there. Because the nature of the zoning is B1, it requires a conditional use permit for a drive-through. So that will be coming to the Planning and Zoning Commission in the second meeting of May.
Great. Super.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request that, uh...
Do that in, in the call to the commission. Okay?
Okay.
No, you're, you're good. That's next. We appreciate that, Motti Salas. And now we'll, Agenda Item Number Nine, Call to the Commission. Okay?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd request that we have an update on, you know, the improvement plan for Hunt Highway. I think it's been about a year since we've taken a look at that. I'd like to see it, where that's at.
So, and, and just to a, add a little bit more definition of that, that's from basically Arizona Farms Road South.
To Franklin, well, at least.
Yeah, to get it, get, get that next section of improvement, and then whatever the town has plans in there too, south of Magic Ranch, so, okay?
Okay, thank you.
That's requested for the next, you know, we have to agendaize it, so that'll be, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had an opportunity to briefly look at the transportation plan earlier today. Didn't get through the whole thing, and I can only assume that it has not been updated since 2020. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Salas?
Correct.
So, at, at one of our future meetings, hopefully relatively soon, could you bring back to the commission some updates on the short-term projects that were identified in the 2020 report? It's now been four years. That would be Hunt and Felix, Hunt and Arizona Farms, Hunt and Ataway, 287 and Ataway, Hunt and Bella Vista, and Hunt and Ganzel.
Okay.
So if you would update the commission on those short-term projects and let us know where they stand, I'd greatly appreciate it. One other thing, Mr. Chairman, I was surprised to see that 78% of the land in Florence is owned by private owners. It, it really surprised me, and that 16% of that then is state trust land also. So it doesn't give us a whole lot to work with if developers don't come forward. Thank you.
Any future agenda items or anything else from, anyone else?
Yes, I think we had a holdover item. I'm not sure, Mr. Harmer, if we were getting an update on the PUDs, right? That, oh, through the years, there are quite a few, as I understand it, active PUDs that may or may not be, um, actionable right now, but I thought we were getting, uh, an update on that.
We're still preparing it. There's, there's some... Am I coming through? It doesn't feel like it on this end. Um, that, that, I'm just trying to make sure that we are as accurate as possible. Um, after mentioning it briefly at a previous meeting, I went back and just double-checked my mon, numbers, and I found all kinds of my own errors. So I, you know, I don't, I really hesitate putting anything out there that I'm not fully comfortable with.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of things. And Chris, I'm glad you waited. Um, do we have a, a waste, uh, water, wastewater, reclaimed water, master plan, infrastructure plan? And, and I guess if so, could I, could I get a copy, just to familiarize myself with the, with what the future holds?
I believe several meetings ago when I attended, I spoke about, um, one of our, over the next two years, about putting together all of our plans. We are in the process, it was, it was CD Farms. It was CD Farms when I spoke. Um, we do not have anything specific to recharge at all today. Um, our, our last water master plan is significantly dated, um, so much so that I wasn't even aware that it existed. Um, so we've, we've now are in the process, as I stated in the CD Farms meeting, of determining, um, what other communities are doing. So we have a list of, um, reports that we're looking at. We're looking at our age report to see some of those gaps, and then looking at, um, either doing that in-house, which would be my preference. I believe we can. Um, the person that we have serving in that role believes that they can as well. The ones that are being done, that we like so far, are being done by one consulting firm. Um, so we are, we are evaluating those. We, recharge will be part of our, our water master plan. Um, most likely, unless absolutely necessary, we're probably going to produce one document for water slash recharge, and then follow up with something that is more global on the wastewater side. But the reports that we have are extremely dated on the water side, to the point of, obviously, they aren't aware of what happened in 2020 as it relates to the Penau County model being updated and everything else. So anything that's even older than that, I would say is not of much use, but we are going to work on that.
No, I, I appreciate that because the, the water, wastewater, reclaimed water master plan tends to influence the way development happens in an orderly fashion, so I think that would be valuable for us to have so that we understand how that all fits together, just another piece of the puzzle that goes with, um, transportation and everything else. So I, I commend you that you're working on that, and just, the quicker the better, I think. So thank you very much. We'll all look forward to getting a presentation on that when it's done.
I think something else that's come up very recently that's, it's important to bring in front of everybody tonight is, if you look really carefully up north of maybe Hunt Highway, you'll see this CCN is not consistent within the Epcor Service area. You will see parts that they do not own, which would then there be left for our first right of refusal for the town, but we can't build these mini wastewater plants and all that. So as part of our...
Chris, I just want, want to make sure, because we're, we might be stumbling into an area of having not agendaized this, just requesting it. Maybe we would request that you come back at a future date and give us kind of the, the bird's eye view that you're giving us now in, in an agendaized fashion, so the folks, if they want to listen in, can. So I, I appreciate your enthusiasm for doing this, but let's agendaize it and make it official.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, uh, one, one other thing that I, I wanted to mention, um, I, I went to a really good thing last week called a Humanities Speaker Series, and this young lady sitting beside me emceed that, and it was awesome. We had a, a young lady there from the Tohold Odom community that talked to us about native, um, plant use, and, uh, it was, it was really, really well done. And then just to look into the future, on the 10th of next month, um, there will be another speaker series at the library, 10 a.m. on, uh, water issues in Arizona.
Water and agriculture and farming in Arizona.
And this young lady did an excellent job of emceeing that, and just another kudo to her. I understand that she is not at a Chamber of Commerce recognition event this evening, where she was going to be very highly honored so that she could be here with us. So...
That's why I'm a, a little bit annoyed at, uh, Councilmember Bucholato, because I wanted to duck out too, but I came here.
I, I think she's, I think you're being honored as Woman of the Year in, in our community, something like that, Citizen of the Year? Something like that?
Well, I, I'm the last to know. I was congratulated by our APS rep at the warehouse in Casa Grande. He shook out my hand, and he said, "Congratulations." I said, "For what?" He said, "For your award." I said, "I don't, I don't know what you're talking about."
So we have an honoree on the dais with us, and we, we appreciate that. Um, and I, I know that, um, that we, we're just about down to the last two on Fridays on Main, aren't we?
I believe so, yes. Yes, I think this was a makeup one, and then we have another one, yeah.
Yeah, so I recommend you hit those up too. A lot of good stuff happening in our community.
Mr. Chairman, I, I had asked staff about, um, where I come from, it's always, we've always had a, a, an attorney at these meetings, a town attorney at, or a city attorney at, at planning meetings, and, and we don't here. Is there a reason why?
That, that is a really good question, and maybe we should agendaize that and, uh, just have a, a presentation from staff and from our town attorney on, um, attorney participating in these meetings. That be okay to do that on a future, future agenda? Great, okay.
Mr. Chair, I could like to echo my fellow commissioners' call back to Mr. Salas. I really appreciate you being here. I think it's made a big difference to me and the commission to understand these things, um, that are so important to all these PUDs. So thank you for your time. I know Monday night was a late night, and Vice Mayor, and you're here again, but you're, you're at the center of all roads, right? So, thank you.
Yeah, and we, we put you on the spot this evening, and we're looking forward to, what, about three different presentations? Educational presentations from you in the near future, so, yes, thank you very much. With that, commission members, if there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn at 7:41.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, that motion to adjourn by Vice Chair Adam and a second by Commissioner Pro. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.